I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed.
We're gonna say the large prayer, prayer, sorry.
Name the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Goodbye, son, holy spirit. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roco.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalain. Councilmember Brooke Marcot, here. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter. Councilmember Deedee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Thank you. Public comment.
Warren Goschisant for Agenda Item Number...
It's time to ask you to silence your phone, and remember, there's no back and forth. We just listen to public comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to come before you tonight. I know there's an agenda item tonight, appropriate funds, for Armator Park. Just wanna, again, thank you publicly. I know a lot of people are excited in the neighborhood. Thank Mr. Broussard for his appropriations out of his $100,000.
Definitely.
And again, all of what you've done, and I'll see Ms. Heather here tonight. She's been a big plus for the neighborhood. The more you do, the more participation happens in those parks, and it's good to see. So, I just wanted to come here publicly and thank each of you for the support.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Madam Clerk, Item 2.
Acceptance of the Minutes of December 21st, 2021, as published on January 5th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, I think, Councilman Lewis, was that you?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilman Lewis. And a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there any comment or discussion on our minutes of December 21st? Hearing and seeing none, please vote your machines. Thank y'all. 3A.
Public hearing for Ordinance Number 2021-26, and Ordinance Amending Sections 14 through, uh, 14-5, 14-6, and Article, I'm sorry, and 14-7 of Article 1 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia, relative to dangerous animals.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there anyone to comment publicly on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed, and Councilman Swier, thank you. Madam Clerk, our next public hearing, 3B.
Public hearing for Ordinance 2021-27, and Ordinance Amending Article 7 of Chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to Sections 86-261, 86-262 prohibiting certain activities and travel lanes.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Whoa. Motion by, I'll give it to Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Is there anyone to comment on this item? This is your item? Come on up. These are for before the meeting. If you do public comment, you don't have to fill one out. But, it's all good.
Happy New Year.
Good to see you.
Okay, good to see you all. Yeah. 14 is very serious. We have a serious dog problem in our community. There's a house on the corner of Corrine and Field Street where a pack of wild dogs live.
Oh, in a different one.
Wait, okay. I'm sorry, we already had the...
That's what I had.
I'm sorry, we already had the public, the public hearing for the...
I had it.
For the dog ordinance. So, you should have commented at the beginning of the me... When you fill these out, that's at the beginning of the meeting.
Right.
Or for the public hearing, but you missed that one. We already voted on it.
Yeah, I went to the bathroom. But that's all good.
Uh, I tell you what, make it quick, and we'll cheat a little bit.
Oh, it's gonna be quick.
Let me check with Legal.
Yeah, Legal's not here, so make it quick.
I don't want it to be legal. I don't want it to be, I don't wanna do nothing illegal.
You're fine.
Yeah, but anyway, I'm gonna make it quick.
Thank you.
About the dog, they ran an old lady just today from the corner store, which is on Hopkins. It was vicious dog. She fell. She had some pretty serious injury for 79 years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like I said, they're living under there. And the second one, uh, we have a serious problem with people stopping, handing things off to each other in the middle of the street with no respect to no one. So, yeah, that's something that I totally agree with, that we need to crack down on. That's it, she didn't take long.
No, thank you very much. I appreciate it, as always. Okay, is there anybody else to comment on our, the item we're on, which is the activity in the travel lanes? Not hearing and seeing anybody else? I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Bell. Item 4A.
Ordinance 2021-26, and Ordinance Amending Section 14-5, 14-6, and 14-7 of Article 1 of Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia, relative to dangerous animals.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilman Dustin Swier. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. This gives us a new tool to deal with those dog issues. Madam Clerk, 4B.
Ordinance 2021-27, and Ordinance Amending Article 7 of Chapter 86 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of New Iberia to Sections 86-261, 86-262 prohibiting certain activities and travel lanes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, need a second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing, seeing none, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, Item 5A.
Resolution 21-147, awarding contract to plan at recess for the District 3 Armator Park Improvements Project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and I need a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Thank y'all. Is there any discussion? I would just like to add, Mr. Broussard is not here tonight. He's sick, but talked to him today. He's pumped about this. He's worked hard to get exactly what the neighborhood wants, and I think it's gonna be a good project. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh...
Yes, sir.
As always, we talk, you know, from time to time, and Mr. Broussard say, "Marlo, you better say something about my park."
He told me the same thing.
So, no, uh, I actually served on the Parks and Recreation Board, Mr. Chairman, when we were looking at the revitalization of that park, and, uh, Mr. Broussard asked me to go pass over there and look at it. Couple of weeks ago, it's coming out nice. I like the momentum with our parks. I like the idea that all our councilpeople are taking initiative to put dollars that we're able to spend into our parks. I mean, our parks are gonna be here longer than we're gonna be here. So, I'm glad to see Mr. Broussard make that decision for his community, and our community at large.
That's right. Cool, thank you.
So, can I have the...
Yes.
Question about the contract?
Sure. I have the architect here to answer it. No, I'm picking.
I know.
I do, but what you got?
Now, um, I was just looking to see, um, I didn't see and hear where they, we get signed off on making sure it was correct before last payment. So, just from the contract standpoint, usually, you know, someone goes in and checks before the last paycheck is cut.
Well, no, this is a new project, so we're signing the contract, but they haven't started the project.
No, I mean, at the end. I didn't see in the contract how we were gonna determine whether or not they fulfilled it.
Oh, we'll do the same thing like we always do, and they'll do a punch list, and we'll close out the project. I mean, they won't get all of their money. We'll have retainage, and we'll hold money on them until they're finished.
Okay.
Same as we always do.
Okay.
In other words, all of these projects, all of our $100,000 projects, Marlo's bid today, as a matter of fact, and we had Dustin's bid today at the park, but we're handling them like we do all the rest of our projects.
Okay. All right, just wanna make sure.
Ah, thank you. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Okay, this next item, 5B, I'm gonna move to another meeting. It's some electrical work that we need done to finish up the marina behind Rodriguez Park, but I got three bids, and two of them have backed out. So, we're gonna look at it again and rebid it. I didn't wanna just keep jumping higher and higher, and I do think that the best thing to do is rebid it. So, I'll be bringing that. I don't wanna scratch it, don't wanna do anything. I'm just gonna try to push it to the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Are you gonna get, so you're gonna get a total of three, two more bids?
Well, on these, they're under the dollar amount that I need to request three bids. I request three bids, I get three subcontractors interested, three electrical contracting firms that have the right licenses. But, like, if one of them doesn't bid, but I've contacted three, I can go with, pick out of the two bidders that are left. But, sometimes, in this instance, I had a low bid, the low bidder backed out. I had a second bid, the second bidder backed out. So, then I'm like, okay, I'm only left with the highest bidder. I think that we can do better. So, just like if you remember with roof projects before, and some other projects, I just didn't accept the bids, and we rebid it. But on a small project, I need to contact three, but I wouldn't necessarily have to have three bids that actually, you know, initiate.
My question is...
You have to have two, though.
Being that the two amounts of the bidders that you have up here, they're substantially different. So, was something left out that maybe that lowest bidder didn't see is the reason why he backed out, or...
Well, they were only, it's a small job. One was at $10,000 something, one was at $12,000 something, and then the other one went up even more, $20 something.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, yeah, I think, from my personal opinion, one was too high, and the other two were too low. So, you know, we're just gonna redo. I think that it, you know, I think the $14,000, $13,000 price, whatever it was, is probably what the project should cost.
Okay. All right.
So, anyway, I think the safest thing to do is that we rebid it.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Cool, so that'll come up again, and we'll move on to 5C.
Resolution 22-02, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion from Menville Lumber Company for Phase 2 Dockberry Swing in George Rodriguez Park.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So, when, I'm sorry. When are we gonna see a completion?
Um, he's got about another month to go, I guess, to complete everything.
Yeah, I think it will be close to beginning of April.
Right, right. This is just the front part. He doesn't have much left in the front. The museum would like to utilize the front.
Yeah.
And so, we have made a push to give him substantial just on the front area, so that the museum can utilize it for the fundraiser, but we made sure that he didn't have, he was substantially complete. So, on the front area, he is. On the whole project, I'm saying he's got about a month's worth of work. He's gotta polish the floors and do a few things on the front area.
Yeah.
But he's got a few months' worth of work on the rest of the project. But all we're giving him is substantial completion on the front area.
Okay.
It's only a partial substantial.
Right, right.
Could think that fundraiser's coming up pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. This has put the fire under everybody.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, any questions, comments?
No, Freddie, I just can't wait till it's finished. I like what we're doing downtown New Iberia. Man, we gonna, we gonna be one of the, you know, premier cities along the test, you know, and I can't wait till it's complete, so I can do a bed and breakfast with my family and go tour my own community for a change.
I really think when we're done, between the visitor's center, between the park, between the marinas, between Felicity's Landing that's coming, which gives access to everybody into the bay and back downtown, all of those projects, you know, then you match that with the ARPA projects that are coming, the new restroom and stage that'll add on to the Steamboat Pavilion. When you look at the whole picture, we really are setting up downtown, one, to be inclusive of the whole community, and number two, to really start inviting people to come from other areas. I think that it's gonna give us the platform to hold events, to do, you know, other things that attract people to our downtown. So, that's, that's the plan, anyway. Yes, sir.
I would say this, I mean, I know you, you driving downtown now, you see a lot of construction, but it looks so much better just looking at the construction, seeing it wide open. And you can look from where the, the entryway's gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
It looks so much better now, even though it's still in the construction.
Yeah, no, it's...
It's actually an open field.
It's gonna open it up, and that's gonna be cool, and then we can start putting some barricades and do some ticketed events, and, you know, there's gonna be some opportunity.
I agree.
Is it almost done?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
The visitor's center...
Uh, probably a good month and a half.
Yeah, I'd say two months, I would've said two months.
That's not terrible.
No, but it's...
But it does look better. I agree with Dustin.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be cool.
Yeah.
Well, that's a thanks to y'all, because if y'all didn't buy into what we're trying to do, you know, and support it, and, and see the vision, we, we couldn't do this, so, thank you.
Now, when you say ticketed event, you, I, I went to speed tickets. We not...
That's a, that's a subject for another day, no.
That's right, that's the wrong...
I'm just saying that, once we have the Steamboat with the new stage and the entry through the visitor's center, we'll put some barricades up, and then you have one way in, one way out.
Gotcha.
We could get some popular bands, we could sell tickets, just different kind of venues could, could come that we could actually... I don't wanna make a profit. Government is not supposed to make a profit, but I would like to have some money to roll back in.
To roll back.
To roll back in.
Roll back.
You know, I do one, one, this is a ticketed event that we make a profit, and then do the next one that's free. And just find a way to kinda balance it, but that way, we include the whole community.
Right, right. And, and I know what you meant, but I got a few calls from speed, speed in the day, and I said, "We might need some more ticketed events." But that's another...
Yeah, that's another opportunity, and, and it's off the subject, but today, we just took one of our units and turned it into a, a traffic unit.
Thank goodness.
And we just got a new guy that is gonna do nothing but write tickets, so that's coming.
He can come and sit in my yard.
Okay, anything else on this before we, I know we're off subject, and, and our city attorney's not here tonight. So, anything else on this item? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank y'all. Thank you, Dave.
Hey, what's going on, Rick? Work took its toll tonight.
I figured that.
Madam Clerk, 6A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2022-01, and Ordinance Accepting Donation from 5K Property Management, LLC to the City of New Iberia for the purpose of creating Little Brooklyn Neighborhood Plaza and to set for public hearing on January 18th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dustin Swier, and a second by Councilman Marlon Lewis. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Well, being that I am a representative of that district, I can't thank them enough for doing that. I mean, we have a lot of good things happening there. Like we've been talking about, the pavilion, hopefully that's gonna be coming soon.
Uh, the bids, we accepted the bid today. I let, uh, we had to, and thank you for your generosity, because it ended up taking more of your money, but we worked...
Not my money.
Uh, no, but the money that you assigned to, you know what I mean?
I made that clear.
Yeah, no, and that's what I meant. It's all city money. But, uh, you agreed to spend more on that, and so, that's coming. This bus stop, little neighborhood park is gonna really be something neat and a neat new concept. So, yeah, I'm excited about it.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else?
Freddie, all I was gonna ask is a quick update on this, not update, but a quick refresher on this. Uh, this is a building that's being donated to the little, to the city for the Little Brooklyn community.
Right. This, basically, the owners of the property realize they have to do something. It's a large block building, an old building. Uh, it's in disrepair. They know it will be torn down to be replaced with something. They approached us and said, "We'd like to give you the building." And this was kind of Little Brooklyn, and the Neighborhood Association there was the catalyst for this, and, and really, they've been fixing houses, the neighborhood's coming together. We bought adjudicated property and added on to the park, and renamed it Little Brooklyn Park. I mean, it's, it's happening, it's, it's popping. So, this would kinda be the icing on the cake. Well, when the family approached us, along with people from Little Brooklyn Association, the building has asbestos. The building has issues. It's a very expensive building to tear down. It's not like a small house that maybe we could move off, or it'll be easy to tear down. So, I had to put my, as much as I wanted it, I had to put the brakes on and say, "We'll take this as a donation when you come up with the money to tear it down," because it was just too much to do all at once. They have. So, in the donation, they're not only donating the building, they're donating the money to tear it down, which is just really awesome. So, uh, it'll get torn down, and then in capital outlay, we're asking for the money. So, we'll have some grass to cut and to keep up until the project can come to full fruition, because we don't have any other way to fund it right now. But, we'll own the property, the problem will be cleared up, the neighborhood will be better, just not having the blighted building. And then capital outlay, we are hoping, and this year's capital outlay, we're working hard to see, to secure the funds to build a bus stop and park.
And it's gonna be, is it that two-story cinder block building on the corner of Johnson and Henry?
Yep.
And it's gonna be used for, once completed, it's gonna be used, it's gonna, you're gonna put a pavilion to...
It's gonna be a little neighborhood park, so to have a little bitty small pavilion.
Okay.
The problem with some of those skinny streets is the buses can't turn around.
Okay.
So, the kids have to walk in the rain up to the corner, up to Henry Street, because the bus won't go down the street.
Okay.
So, it'll become a bus stop, but at the same time, it's really a neighborhood park. So, it falls into parks, it's, it's not really totally a bus stop. It fixes one little issue, but, you know, just like the park coming up of the neighborhood park we're doing on Ann Street, I mean, this is a movement by us to get some presence in communities that we don't have enough of a presence. You know, there, there are streets you go down, and you don't, you could be in any city, 'cause nothing, nothing is letting you know that you're in the city of New Iberia. There's no presence of city government. And so, this is a move that we're trying to make in all the districts, and really get out there where, you know, people know we're there, and it expands our park system.
You know, and not, and not to make a long discussion, but...
Sure, no, this is good.
It's, I'm, I'm, I'm just glad to see the way that we're, as a city and as a council, how we're repurposing a lot of these...
Yep.
Places, and just making them usable, you know, for the public, you know, 'cause who would've thought of that? But a community like Little Brooklyn and a council like us.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. And you have to have a mayor who made, made a living out of taking junk and turning it into something, so it, uh, it doesn't hurt.
It still does.
Yeah, it still does. Cool, any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all, this, this is exciting. Good stuff. All right. 6B.
Introduction of Special Ordinance Number 2021-2022-04, amending the budget for costs associated with the installation of Gen Set at Teat Bayou Wastewater Treatment Plant and to set for public hearing on January 18th, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
It's a move.
Motion.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gonsalain, and a second by Councilwoman Deedee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion on this item?
So, what's the adjustment about?
Uh, because we didn't have it in there, and we have to adjust the budget to, uh, to include the money for the generator.
Oh, so it was just left off somehow?
It, it, we needed, and then we didn't have one. I mean, it just wasn't there, so now we're going ahead and putting one in.
Okay.
Now, this, this is just for the installation. This is not for the actual unit itself, huh?
Uh, it's the money that we're missing. We had some money budgeted, but we didn't have enough.
Okay.
So, we got the prices, and it's an increase, but the generator was needed from the beginning. It wasn't left off, we just needed.
Yeah.
But we were short.
Oh, so that's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, 'cause there's not enough money to buy a generator, right.
Yeah. Okay, so we're short.
So, what we had in the budget was short. So, we're moving money to allow this to happen, because we need it. Any other discussion? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all. All right, councilmen's remarks. I'll start on Councilman Swier's side tonight.
Uh, yeah, I hope everyone had a, a great New Years,
Uh, yeah, I hope everyone had a, a great New Year's, and, uh, I'm glad to be back here, even though we're a little shorthanded. But, uh, yeah, other than that, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, and to remind, remind everybody that we are having, uh, the unveiling of the Martin Luther King Junior signs dedicating, um, the Hopkins Street as Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Highway on January seventeenth at one thirty PM. Um, from the, after the dedication, we're going to have a march down to the Martin Luther King Community Center in Weston Park, where we're gonna have a short program, um, and then refreshments. So we're inviting everyone in the public to come out and join us for the unveiling, and then also for the march and the celebration afterwards.
Great, great. And, uh, somebody's gonna come in and fill out the paperwork?
I have it right here.
All right.
I just need to drop it off.
Well, there you go, well, you know the place to drop it off.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
I was gonna ask Aaron to put it on Ms. Sanders' desk.
Yeah, no, we just, that, the city cosponsors these kind of events, and there's some liability reasons why we need the paperwork.
No, no, that's, I was actually gonna drop it off early, but I'm like, wait, I have to come to the courthouse later.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Mayor Pro Tim.
Unfortunately, I was a little late tonight due to work, uh, my schedule's pretty hectic right now for another two weeks.
Mm-hmm, bet.
Should be good to go, but, uh, yeah, I'm just, uh, kinda reeling back, looking at this past first year, and, uh, the other night, looking over some of the old agendas, and it was pretty exciting, the things that this council accomplished, and the, the leadership that the mayor's provided for this first year, you know, the sky's the limit for the next three years for this city and, and this administration. I feel really, very excited and blessed to be part of this. But on another note, uh, tune into the mayor on K-Pal, uh, if y'all ain't heard him, uh, really, really excited. What did you call him, Monday?
Mondays with the mayor, yeah.
Mondays with the mayor. I thought he did a great job this week promoting our city and, uh, and the things that are happening, and, uh, creating some excitement, and, uh, got some big things coming, so, uh, really excited to be a part of this team.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Lewis.
Thank you, Rick, and you, you didn't miss a whole lot. Glad you made it. But, uh-
No smoking sign at your office.
We talked about that later.
That's for another day.
No, Happy New Year to everybody, I'm so grateful to be back and, and, and get to work, you know, and make some more things happen. I mean, we've done a lot, as you, as our mayor Pro Tim has said, and there's a lot more to come, you know, uh, stay safe, uh, stay warm, and, and please slow down. I got a ton of calls from people talking about speeding in various communities, uh, I kinda, um, alluded to that on a whole nother agenda item, but, uh, kinda like to play on words a little bit. And, uh, you know, slow down, man, we, we got kids walking, and, you know, elderly sometimes walking, you know, they're not always aware of that oncoming speeding traffic, so, uh, again, I'm glad you said we got a new car, or old car converted into a traffic car, and just, you know, don't call me to fix a ticket if you're speeding in my community. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
What's, what's your community?
All of it. All of it, but Weston for sure.
Appreciate that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just received word that they're gonna start construction on the Pocket Park on Santiago tomorrow.
Yep.
So that's super exciting. It should take about a week and a half. Um, the kids are really gonna enjoy that in our neighborhood. Also, I just kinda wanted to, uh, make a comment, I guess, about the, uh, money that's supposed to go to the PD from the American Rescue Plan. We had mentioned it a couple meetings ago.
Right.
And you were thinking of different suggestions. Well, I thought of like sending some to an EMR class if possible, that's a emergency medical responder training. Obviously, don't force it on anyone, they really would have to wanna go through it, because that's not for everybody. Um, and it just kinda helps out in like situations where they arrive to a vehicle accident perhaps, you know, they're always there first before anyone else, so they have the opportunity to potentially save a life if they have that training. Um, but I talked to Mr. Ricky Eskey, I think I said his name right, he, uh, already has a relationship apparently with the PD, and he said he'd be willing to come and talk to all of us as a council, just to kinda tell us what he would do, and prices and stuff like that. So I just wanted to mention that to you guys, you know, if that's something we can even do with that money, 'cause I'm not really sure.
Yeah, well, that's some of the, not issue, but we are still weeding through, uh, you know, we're, talked to the fire chief today, and a million dollar, nine hundred and some thousand dollar fire truck, he's working on ordering that, 'cause that money was from ARPA, but not still in the ARPA system, so we could do that. The, Joe is looking into street sweeper, uh, options for us right now, so we can do that. And then I went ahead today and verbally asked, uh, David Ollant to bring me a contract for the next meeting to get the splash pad going. So that is something that is, can happen quickly, because that money was from ARPA, but kinda moved out of ARPA. And those are the three things that I really felt, you know, we could speed on, so that's gonna happen. As far as for the ARPA stuff, there are some things we can begin, there are some things we're waiting till, I think it's April, waiting for some more data to come out that we need to have before we can make some decisions.
Okay.
But the plan's been submitted, it looks good, we've gotten feedback, I don't think anything's changing, we're good to go. It's just, I wanna make sure we follow all the right steps, so that when we're audited at the end, I'm not coming back to y'all to say we have to pay some money back. Uh, but it's starting, and there are a few things we can do now. So where I see we can, like the oil and water separator, I've, uh, talked to an engineering firm about getting gone and getting me a contract to design that for public works. So some things will move, some things will be just a little bit longer, just to make sure that we, we, we do it right.
Okay.
But, uh, good, thank you for that suggestion. I'm gonna pass that on.
Right.
And the chief and the assistant chief, well, the whole administration, we've been talking at our Monday meeting, and they're coming up with, you know, ideas and things, and they're very pumped from the Christmas thing, when the four high schools got all those toys, and we went, and one of our cops was Santa Claus, and people were elves, and it was all police department employees, and they all went out and, uh, you know, all officers all went out and gave out toys, and, and that really went well, but that's got them pumped